Let's talk to who she will in a little bit later. What's up to call case she thought you know how to see the academic at the direct day pay you more tell you new talk I what your superintendent like a name of holy law muhalita what's your teacher Allison here jump on member teach so let's go to just that we're now one a conda pay you know when they pay you know what Dr. Ferencis senior officer more could you tell me here the paper you have here what talk I you talk I'm okay that I need only child paper appeal uh minus school like a number good day you do to be cool but I'll la happy can I know you call how a wrong here muataki but I had a pain to feel if you move to a neck cooler cool tallam cat so happy to turn the job home who can there near to let the what they I saw the pick her what summer what they love or una la yaki leholy una yenching they could go sa fashion to so let's go to the page of principle well I could who told you I did a young you talk about to check and I know to tell you they could say about to get out la happy they in what's a cat's a key when you were holy that's it when could but come to tell to just staff or to pay just the district so happy pay what been call professional you know how virtually la ya can I know you call we bet so let's go to you talk to a pillow man will he pay what I'll I did just that la talk I'll do a talk check and um they want to we had a bell and you know go to cheer what I saw talk a literacy initiative um they can I know you call how a wrong share I told Danny pay John ECU uh you know Joe i i t you know the oh no I have been that key who's a fashion to so let's go to both a pain uh new ah they know can catch a what they move a John ECU la ya jatunsa and they pay cool like she power they will in a little custodian any how you only chat to they just labor market you know to lose um tell you pay more to area and I'll well I'm sure to the page to pandemic they you more regular update to jump or he just change it to you all the Vitan Vitan yeah you get to Lu district they move to go to to the pay you will be what I'll la mu pa to take it long um they pay go sa got me so let's go to la you talk about what she we had a base a book a wrong car wrong to shoot to so let's go to who could say fashion to pay uh go to go you look at all la la what they love to call a global pandemic um they say la happy they have no a kind of a pay you love visit to um they will in a Joe what support what pay you move a Joe actually you know the go to what pay you love they know what my last senior officer Eric Moore here here Dr. Ferenc Amy Ferenc you all I'm a thought to pay come to share to I pick her data who you love my kid to uh here pay Joe associate superintendent la what holy administrator here Joe teacher uh pay you love shade to Joe data to Joe tunsa car here who taught me Jimmy Jay I appear to jump on had here will in a you know pay a big and I yeah will it chat to they not talk who tried to Dr. Ferenc here senior officer more guy you know John do what's your teacher Allison here Joe superintendent who wrong share had to uh long G need so let's go to you know man I pay you love my thoughts to la who they play me check off cycle um they say talk I get pay you to the chill I'm sure to call data go see I pay you talk I'm sure to call I get will in a pay you love my measure shape you tunsa how you cut to the chat they are how you long to lose yeah good much a data la de information una to nee tell it to Ted Dr. Ferenc my little thought to nee so to the Joe information they say la happy Joe the Yuki sing song la yamato this is kind of a yaki I had to will in a get a dog and then you only chat to um they have a point who you're much uh how you know the appendix uh the boy uh yeah how yeah I had to will in a what tennis ray you what I'll eat at to here will in a yeah to suspension any how you only they are in the they pay you more a more she had to math literacy they do in the they ma chalucha to Joe uh scobuolo la mo lo no rechi la la how you love new talk to pay you know um they man I pay go sa fashion to happy Joe data what they move what you should you should a Jilly choose she long the luva team new move a lot of gang call talk Joe tunsa can they be I had a more can ya know to the Joe assessment uh la you do they Joe data may you hear to pay I had a will in a uh so I get what you're part of your part of the chat to talk look go to what pay you more to master pay la you had a pay you senior to they are shade to turn the MCA they call leader need to report I had to will in a date what he he know me only chat they could you talk shade to can ya la who the social emotional shade you how how what I'll they are leader they could you more that Joe student Joe service you know to pay shade when they you know talk uh she uh Chow Xia Yi uh you a贴口 uh yeah I had a top pay she talk shade to a director Kili they pay in for happy uh Joe American in the here Joe tunsa can do need to a chua hang to the car no uh do you need to pay Joe tunsa can do um can I know you call how I get to I had a new change change to the Joe tunsa can do you talk to a talk show can do here John ECU not to the Joe support staff here uh you know how check and I know me only chat they call pay to the more of balance to the shark in no car who what you know how change they were they can I know you talk to you percent uh talk I hope pandemic lot in the you have to like today no you you love thoughts I had to will in a hard distance learning what do they just you know the no what be a shade to I did a DJ demon can I get to I had to call what do they just uh the talk check and we had a more key more like she do a youngie they can they part to Joe tunsa can do um they know you share be shadow change I had to Joe tunsa can do they like experience uh long the I have an Joe I have an T I culture they could say fashion I had to tanha Joe tunsa can do you talk to uh they lay a more can ya what you should to la sharky you shouldn't I had to I had a pain like to la sip they are you know how to la who she to you should love um they talk you share pay Joe Joe tunsa can do na talk I do a talk check and they had a pay you talk I'm a shy shy come back don't that Joe tunsa can do he just have a lady um they can they are how pay you talk change can ya what pay you talk I'm a shy to uh can call the more uh social emotional yeah they are they are to pay more case she thought I pay I'm a shy I had to will in a Joe tunsa can do they know how you are sorry chat to the chat Joe chat to the chat um they movie Joe man they are more tunsa can do you don't can get part I didn't just demon la you had a yeah una the they pay go you more Joe social worker who you Joe la I'm a shy to the gate can do they pay shade to call I had to call gender la yah identity talk you should lay a talk to they pay go you more Joe resource no Joe I'm a part to Joe tunsa can do here talk a to be can do um they call change who they talk about I had to call can do you play me you have bought la ya I had to call key can do that I know you should when they call pandemic you know uh can I know how you call change I had uh when they call pandemic they know how you only chat to they they pay in you know how try la I had to keep uh can they try to the chat try to I had to look check and do you more li I pass you both to tunsa can do they can they are you call how I get to you know I had a pay you know you call a who I had a learning law 某种的go to I pay you talk when they call I pay go you she pongka to more can call uh but what a pay but I had to pay Joe tunsa can do cool a jungle um talk I love my shadow call you know you yeah la shade to la Joe say where la you about I had to Joe say where the la li chat to uh can they they young 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 uh they more oh yeah you know the car get you should they more oh yeah what go um talk you know to spring which more Joe data to they talk pay more equal assessment no my pay you should to more how to Paul I have to they are talk be shade to call Joe data I get to I had a blood Joe I percent the Joe tunsa can do they la ying zan yang da so to talk spring they call a boat the no I had to Joe tunsa can do that I had a nothing that she how do I know the um they pay you talk I'm a shy to call early literacy talk I'm a Joe tunsa can do so to Hong P they you Joe three percent they yink at to a li call get what a lika shade you know the no blood Joe I percent what yink what I'll run you know how early reading assessment can I know you call bits you know the car what would hat sa I had a game they yeah they young shy to the no oh ton da la you had to Joshua you know up a coach uh motor oh see能够能够能够 motor能够能够 yeah they are shade to the tunsa can do la Paul I had to willi tunta and the lumbe and they day more to Joe Joe blood food they pay the cash shade to a they never pong la to cheat a pay percent they can I get to they we had a pay you know to go to where they pay her pongka talk I love more to the um they pay ying chung to a talk can call when they day Q to a this is my more can call you know her pong talk I like can I shadow you can do no um they shadow to la who they letter sounds what a boat though I had a uh pongka to能够能够 no can I Joe the car la who the letter sound Dr. Ferenc even my it hat sa call you will it chat to the they call you call what talk I'm a shy I had so I get what she do a talk check and do they just demon on a so talk you can do uh shade to the la call la who the composite score what a boat I had pongka they hang to the Joe watch your letter sound they can I know you call how I got I had to yavi call distance learning they can they tell you more get you should to pay Joe tunsa can the first grade reading assessment what can they get to la Paul I had to call initial assessment well I'm a T call limitation they ago and I go I had to call YouTube uh so she do Joe tunsa can do um they jatunsa can do la they la mass uh more to send the you know how online uh they can they are call they you know the I had to Joe more part of your they are leader they could pay to the you talk to look of Hindu capetiri for my men I had to will in a copy uh Paul I had to I got shade you know the fall winter this spring they 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 pong only chat to you know the car the John ECU they are how they were um great answer uh they Joe um same care la more remotely to Joe tunsa can do I'm a saint she a didn't just demon Joe tunsa I wa you know I draw how la who the distance learning uh I'm a saint didn't just demon I draw a check and talk a take to assessment they should more like to who you call la yes what it chat to they talk a I'm a saint Joe only know can you can you know they need to move on guarantee I had to go you talk Paul I like that they go to a能够 uh can they are call uh Joe oh see能够 you they pay to leave Paul leader you Joe you call percenting day talk you know you share winter go you go to go to能够能够 what a you Paul I had to will in a song tella no you have pay percentage lay up percentage this is la Joe the her lay upon me they have pong la li chat uh Joe I had to share G N A G only chat they were they can I know you call how I knew you are la uh what the what I had to will in a you know uh car key can do can do when they know you pong run you know shade in the they pay you know shade how I had to what I'll run I got I got you Paul can they know they could I did a they are they are young upon to tell you pay call la you lose they spring fast reading them yeah more I had to the they are young uh they are young they are Gli pro percent they I saw the Joe late here reading J more than to know to nee this is can I talk to my Dr. Ferenc what to lot to share talk I had to do you know John do um they are leader I'm way call overview the no Joe la thought to you know the song tella no I had to call pandemic only you your equal way you are you your equal you should they could go say that Joe Ning Bo Ta 通普拉河路的陈老姑西塔 la who but I'll la happy can they la ying your equal they pay Paul I'll la happy I call literacy in the uh Joe Paul I had to la Lu la you tunta and I had can they they young you should um they call assessment the they young new ah do a talk I you know the I song uh cool my limo to nee shade I had you know the fall I'm a Joe so winter this spring I should say I had a pay saying John the they yeah I had a pay should more the talk they pay you to you new ah hang to talk you can do no they Paul la I had a I to uh la call literacy the they young you should they had a la Joe Simon la you Joe gay I'm a mason what Joe Joe tunsa to new ah do um they ying chung more to the I have a having I am here to the new more coming in Joe the la Joe you know the the song Joe great they Joe information when they put they you know the I look she la mucha la pi I sound to I sound what can they are you call how I could Paul I had to you know the song no they are the more car reading Joe 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 tunsa can do uh call a young sing one day here call the Zito Joe la who the status will in a play a more lose to pay Joe tunsa can do I'm a they are leader they pay you Paul I had to more each a tunsa can do la you mucha la mucha to group property here just that what two I'm a what holy part to uh you know the la call level she new game in Paul I um they can they are you call how I pay sa Joe go to you love to they they are you should you should Joe Joe tunsa can do you only chat to they more to the能够能够能够 I don't know uh they bought the now yeah when you are la to how literacy can I know you call you know how pay call literacy what they you more to try to talk a shade to the less no I'm a the O they you will it chat this is my they young you make sense to pay Paul I had to Joe data what here to a talk I know you only chat to who sa fashion to nee I like to you know the卢比塔拉呢 they they are la motor car la who the dyslexia training you they had a Lu check and I know more the information when you change to Joe uh I'm a shy I had to will in a pay you will it chat pay to the improve to they Joe hop here la you Joe get they call Joe they could you link a share but I'll they pay go you more Joe offer uh low literacy structure you know the卢比you the talea no you have to they they Joe this ass call Paul uh Paul Ming do on Zito can I you know the call literacy foundation you know show to um I'm a more to call practices I had to will in a you long li chat to the chat they are car li chat to um they will in a you know you are the Joe li chat car li chat to the more pay you what who sa thought to who sa fashion to me I had to can I more equal foundation you know the keys are all uh they are equal equal blood Joe not he this is sa fashion I had yeah more lose to Joe tunsa can do what I love my chat to um they change change hang to equal they are they are many trade you know talk to uh she uh spring la you can do share song tella no um they lay a more can ya what you know you know sa got fashion I had to la more Joe information what so Charlie so Joe la thought to show the car boat um they call car no they could say fashion to well I who the diverse culture sensitive text they were they pay to you know they talk to they pay the media center they are more than now yeah Joe碰到what pay to you talk I got to I'm a um they pay Joe library they are they young more to cheer you know how tanha they resource la you they yeah what Joe tunsa can do they are they sad to they are sad Paul um can ya who who sa fashion to me can they put to call special education they pay you are more to the Joe student on day uh you know the car upcoming year um they pay more equal la who the literacy institute to Joe special education you know they just building administrator they pay to more what I'm a you know cause focus special group you know what more to car la who their culture they have what they say Paul I had to sa got Joe tunsa can do la what I'll how can go on the yeah they you talk more I'm a Joe I'm a Joe go to say yeah equal to uh look how about the check and they call they tell you more I'm a car la who the capacity
High station. Yeh i ka. Pay to assessment for students in their language. The idea is that as students are taught to do language programming in Spanish, we need an assessment to test literacy. In the home language, which is the language in which students are being taught in the classroom. And so, twenty two percent of students overall are identified as being proficient. And you see the decline kindergarten and grade one straight to thirty one percent students for kindergarten. Going down to three percent kindergarten. So, something to take a look at. Eight percent. Ka na pe chi tro jau shai. Deslada bi shi, pe ha bi shi ka na wa pe, shaujua rong li cha. Sima, the one you made, pe jau high station, ha? Ha la ka ke chebi ya huo ya, mu jau tro dao yeh che ka nda wa ri hapless. Da na sen, pe yeh sa, na ka ne po de, pe jau programa, ye ki ka nda, pe mu ho ho lu la kia na. Ne kia jau pe he de. Ah, ka na wa pe de kemi ya na he, ni ka nda high station level of. Blow ti chi, temro chi de, jau sha shau, ka shau cha tro jau lu, Spanish. Te, te ne kia he de, ta pe shau jau ka pe chi shaujua ka tu. Ina jau ke pe shaujua de, ha pe lu kemi ya ka nda no. Ha ra pe, ha ra li po de ya ta nde no xiong no na. Ke yeh po de pe, ho ti i, ye pe sa go, jau, ah, na po pe jau shaujua no, la mu, la mu tu. Tro jau si fu de, la mu ba de kemi ya la ka nda, shau ka kemi ya se ke to ka ke pa yeh li cha. Ga ka chi xua he de, chi de kemi ya ka nda, ka lu, ka lu, jau li cha, sen, de ka za tu, tu sen. Na xin li chi xua de, ne ya, ne ya ta tu, pe chi hai za jau, ni yo ka nda, he ki li ha ka, la ho lu, wa ke. Pe chi xua de shai jau, ke go no. Oh, ne ka ku chi, ku chi nyau. Je, na ha de oi li po la no. Ta na do la. Jau tro ho, na, presentation. Ha, na, ta dao he de, ka mu de mi ya ka nda, ni ka za ta no. Gu ya tro si fu ka nda, gua de, ka mu de mi ya ka nda za ta no. Gu ya shaujua, jau de ka nda li cha, ni ka da rong, chun no, dao lo ka xie chun, lo ka kie chun. Na xin pe de shu xua, ka pe mu jau, pe mu jau ke ka jia jau, ye ba jia ka tu, si fu ya de li che zi. Dao mu ba de mi ya no, ka nda Spanish, jau ho de pe, ying, shai tro, te he ze ka nda, kiun te, xin pe chi pa shi ka Spanish, li cha he. Na ga he hai ze he ze lei. Be ya pizza jau kindergarten, be shaujua no la mu ka, ka lei. Ha na ha pe mu tro lu spring, jadu, ho chen alo. These are areas that are really focused on numeracy. And so, one way to, there's seven areas, but I'll give you an example. For example, the activity of Fort County where the student has to count up to thirty one. So thirty one, those students, fifty six percent of students were able to count up to thirty one. Okay, so you see a significant number by the end of kindergarten, that's forty four percent. That are not able to count up to thirty one. And so, this gives us an understanding of the type of work that our students are doing. You also see on the next slide, the district from spring nineteen to spring twenty one. Do you see a slight increase in percentage, which is positive. And again, as we get deeper into the impact of the pandemic, we'll be able to better understand that level of loss. And looking at the data, what I predict is that we were probably in line for a pretty positive trajectory, given the pandemic. We actually suffered, within that three percent. We're probably on track. Ha ne menji de shima, ye sa la, ye xong li de, pe de, ye pe percent ni ya da la. This is again KCOM, so concept of math, and looking at spring nineteen, spring twenty one. So, you see a slight increase. What's interesting, there's a couple of groups, your African American group. That in particular, you see all other gains, groups gained. You see a decline for your African American student. And so, again, we need to go more in depth and find out the phenomenon. Sorry, also your Asian group decline. But when you look at the phenomenon between those two groups to see what caused that increase. Tom shi de bi chi la yu man je, pa ha ne li da. First grade math. We get fifty one percent of first grade students proficient on this assessment, three aspects of numbers. You see this six tasks. The Fort County number actually goes up to proficiency would be identified on Fort County. One oh eight to one twenty, so you're able to get up to one hundred and eight. That would be considered proficient. And so, it gives us a target, gives us a read onto the work we need to do relative to less expected in our standard. Jau shau ho lu ya ba la, ka ta li ka, tro tro, ta, pe sa ka la ka dao. We're able to see differences of various, and so this is what we do is we segregate the data. And induce some significant gaps once again. Again, as we're talking about learning loss and also the opportunity gap moving forward. It's really important to know these measures. By the time you get to a grade, you're seeing a number of foundational skills, both in literacy and mathematics. That's really the driver of much of the gaps that you see as students grow into sports. And I will add, this was the first time actually that we gave the first grade district wide. So, one of the positive, it did allow us a better understanding of first grade numeracy. And so that was a positive. And we'll be used to, again, this is an assessment that's really used to support. Shaujua si, ka mu cho ka pe, pa ha kemi ya ka nda ka, shau chun no pa. Li si mu da hai, xiong la ke ta xiong, be dao, ina dao mu, ka timi ya go, ho i la mu, wa jau ke sen no. Ina pe chi tro ka, wa, ta xin pe yeh sa, wa ka pe, ka pe boss, ka ne ha, be dao, wa ka pe boss. Xiong la go lu, ina ba, bi bo de shi bi ma ya ha, pe jau bi bo ke ka ma go cho. Ta ximma, pe sa ba de shi bi kipin, ga ho i, xiong la yu mani jau he. Te ta za pe, pe, kia lei. Ta na pe shai he de, na, na mu ka lei ka la bi tro ho la ka nda, ka nda, te le tu nda. De bi kemi ya ka ho, kari ka ri, jau i, pe sa de pe yeh chi, mu ka la bu ka la shi bi, pe yeh, kia bi kemi ya ka nda. Ha he go ka nda, chun li cha, te shau cha, te le yu si fu de ba dao la, li cha. Ya, jau ni chi ya ko, pe, pe dao, chi xi, tro dao la, ga, lei de xi na, ka na, ha de ju ga. Ina tan tro i ho na, ta xin pe yeh chi, ba wei ka bi ti, mu jau mi ya, ka nda, ha xin ha la mu, ka dao tan tro tro ya, de xi li na. Te i ka, ya na mu lei, ka he de pe de, jau si fu, nyau yau, ta ka nda, ni mu xin ha dao jau. Ni mu kia kemi ya, ka nda, lei de la mu, shaujua de mi ga lei, dao mo li cha. Ye pe yeh chi sa de, ta pe yau mu ga, na, dao ka nda, chi de chi moni dua, bi yau, mo shi ya la mu, ka bo kemi ya ka nda, na, ka jau, te ka dao dao de. La ka nda, jau ha na bi ti, la ga li cha, la chi ga li cha, pe yeh mu xin ha la mu jau, tro de mi ya, ta li, ta li, ba li dao. Jau ha ke ba li dao, ta ximma, pe yada, na mu yau ka kore ka la, pe yau ga, la mu tro lei, xiong no, xiong la xiong pe yau, pile yu ga, xi xi yau ho lu. Xau chi xiong, ka la pe kia, ho ke, mu tro ho ji. Jau ha pe de ke yu ga, chi, eh pe, yu kia lei na, wa dao ya pe yau ba la de, yu jau yu chi chi na. Bi mu dao ga, tro de, mu ya ni, ko ba jau, tro de, jau, si fu la jau la mu ba, tro te mu dao dao ban li bi. Jau ka keng go, gu ya sa, he tro, ka chun la ba. Jau ha vi de, pe huo de since learning, de huo virtual learning, ho computer, te tablet, sen. Je pe chi tro mu xin ha la mu xin chi, ina, je pe ga, ka na, ho kpi re, ina dao sen. Ge tro la ga li dao, ho kpi re, ye kemi la he, ka xie chun, ka kie chun, ge, le chi tro, ha de, i dao i, li no wa, ah, tro ka li du, si fu de. Ni mu ya ke, yeh nyau tro la. Jau na ha, pe yeh ba de, ni yau na ha, bi tro la, wa dao, ge ni mu ha, i dao i, ge yu ba de mi ya, ka nda, ka nda, rong chun. Jau la ya, yau rong jau, yeh ka nda. Jau ha yau, de jau, ni yau, ka kari ka ri, jau chi, jau la ga lei de, ka special education, ka nda chi sen la. Pe yau kia kemi ya, kia si fu ga la lu, la mu kia kemi ya ga, kia lei kemi ya, ka na, tsateng da, ka bo kia dao, li cha, tro la. Mu tro yau na, ha tu, tu, ta ximma, na yau tro, ka lei na, ina, xiong la, pe yau ho ji ga, si fu tan tro, lu ho special intervention school plan. Ka ne i ka, ho pia, ho pia chi la mu ba de si fu, la mu, tro chi i, la mu kia kemi ya ka nda, xiong la chi, de kemi chi, ta mu, tro lu chi ka nda. Pe pe yau chi ho, ge mu nda dao la sai, yu sai li cha, ta ximma, pe kia si fu, de ka nda, ka dui la, de, kemi ya, ka nda, tro ka ni, u chi ka nda no. Ge ka nda dao, yu tu tro la, te le yu xi li cha, te ni yu xi li cha tro la, ta xin yau ka ke ga, pe yau, mu tro ne, ka si fu, te tro ne, ka ne mu tro, ke ga la mu xi, chi xiong chi no. Ka na, pe mu tro jau, ho ka lei de, tu nda, te ka ho ka lei, wa ke ne. Ye oni shi de kemi ya, ka nda, xiong talano la, xiong kemi ya ka nda, chi yu tro tro, ni ju ka nda chi na, ye ni mu ke, dong ka ke ba li cha. La na, ka na, ha pe yau, mu chi yu li, ne ka ni, ba dao kemi ya, ka nda li na. Ina ha, la, pe shaujua xi kemi ya ka nda, nyau, ho de de la, ho de la. Assessment in the middle grades, so typically what you end up seeing, if you look at MCA scores and other assessments. Is you tend to see more movement in the early grade levels. And we've talked earlier about foundational skills, both in literacy and math, and the ability to move students' trajectory with the students gaining those foundational skills. By the time you get to middle school, looking at the data over a number of years, you don't see as significant movement in the middle years. And so, the assessment, the Lexia rapid assessment, was given to our students fall two thousand twenty. We were really trying to identify an assessment process that actually would change the trajectory of the data that we saw. We were able to provide the Lexia rapid assessment for grade six eight. The assessment measures word recognition, vocabulary knowledge, syntax, reading comprehension. In addition to that, we also looked at data, previous data on track, UCA. We still use our FAST as a screener, but we felt that we needed to use the Lexia to really get at diagnosing some of the challenges that students have in literacy. Again, critical to diagnose some of the challenges at the middle grade levels, because oftentimes that is indicative of a lack of foundational skills in literacy. And so, we also provided MRI math reasoning inventory as an optional math diagnostic as well. Math reasoning inventory, ha MRI de la, la mu san, la mu xi xi de zari cha.
So, as Senior Leader Moore referenced, we did have the Lexia rapid screener. Tro lu, jang du, ho opa neng go, neng go na. Tro lu, na, pe, dao yeh, lu chi, pe chi po tau. Kemi ya ka nda, ho jau, jau ho ji xiong no, bi bo re sen ha, na, pe po dao jau, tro zai ke, ka nda, zai ke sa de, shi la, nyau, ta tu la. Dao la sa de, ka na, yeh ha yau, ina, ba de, la ka, ho tu, ta ximma, pe la sen, ta la ke, kemi ya nyau, jau, jau ji. Ka ne pe de, tro ka ke ba li cha, de, la po tau, ha na tu, ta bo ka ke ba zi, ta nde no pa. Je pe chi, ba tro la, he jau ho FAST reading, de, la tu, ge, i percent, xiong, ta ximma, ho, mu tro ho ji, ge, lu xiong, opa ku jau, opa na, neng go i na. Te shi talina, pe kemi ya, ka nda, ho jau, mu tro ho ji. Bi mu, a bi kemi, te shi bi kemi, sa la mu, ka nda, de mu ga, zi. Ye he de, de kemi la he, ta kemi ka nda de, ye ha de chi xi na, lei, ri cha, tro la ka nda, gi de yu rong li, bi he de, za sa de, ka la ba, la wa, ka fe mi de, ha de chi xi, yu ka yau ka, cha li rong. Ye ka gu ya sa, hai ne, zi de, ka pe ke ga, na, Lexia, ba shaujua kemi ya, la ka nda, de, la, ka nda, rong lu pe, xiong la, ba dao, la ka li, de, tro, shau chun no. De de mi ya ka nda, ba ho tu, je li ka tro ke, ni mu, nde la, dao, sa dao, jau, ba ka, nde dao. Ye kemi ya ka nda, ma, ye jau, nyanyi, ten, xi ten, ke de xi, jau, ka dao la, ni mu, nde la, chi, wa cha, jau ni, jau chi, ha ke, za de, ke ga de, hai, du, pe he de, ne xi, jum na dao ya ke ga, tro, de mi ya ka nda. Ye la de mi ya ka nda, ka nda, tu nda, gomu chi geng su. Chen chen, chen, jau, mi ya, e ka nda. Ina, ho ke, mu tro ho ji, ge, chen chen, kemi ya, ka jau, mu tro, ho ji, di ya ti. Pe yeh sa, ka bi kemi ya ka nda, mu ya, po dao, e ka ba, te le zai, 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 ga li de, zai, zai, ta la, ka nda, tro, ke xi li cha, cha ba la, ka ta ta, zai ke ka nda, ka nda. Ina, na ha ke, la ka lei, ho jau, jau, ho ji, la ha, math reasoning inventory, ka shaujua, la, gu ti tro shai la, tro la sen da la, de pe sing, ni yau, ho ji, mu tro, ho jua. De mi ya ka nda, de, he de, pe de, ina, la, la lei, la, la ri cha. Pe yau ka li, bi de, pe de, na, na po na, ka ri cha, de, dao, ina, ka tu. De pe ma, ni mu, du mi ya ka nda, de, pe mu, de, ta pe chi, sa xi, yu de, la mu, bu tu, la mu, ching ka xi jau. De pe ma, ye, he de, xi de bo yau, o dao, pe mu, dao, o dao, ha ta ba la, ka chi dao. Je pe ho, ke ka nda, math reasoning, chui na yau, ho, ke bi shaujua, ka de mi ya, he, de, ka nda, de ni sa de xi, ha na, ba dao no. Ka ni xi xi ha rong la, ta xin, ya si fu, ya, he de, pe de, wo li dao, jau, ba, oru ba, jau, ni, ka nda, de, de ni sa, ka nda, de, cha, zai ke, sa de, zai ke, yu mu, ina, lei, ha lei, la, lei, de li cha. Te, ye bi chi, ta lei tro, no, ka na, te pe, cho ga, pe cho ga, jau, si fu, la, gu ya kemi ya, la, ka nda, tro, wa, la, ya lei, no, li xiong, xi, bi de, dao, no, bi yau, cho ga, jau, si fu, la mu, ma, ho, ska, jau, li, ha ke, ta lu, ho lu. Tro kemi ya ka nda, no, te ka la, ka la mu, ho, ha, math reasoning inventory, no, jau la, jau, shai kemi ya, xi, la, sa de, cha, de, la lei, cha, ka ba, de, dao, zai ke, ka nda, li cha. Pe yeh sa, go, pe, no, wa, na po pe, sen, la, ka tu, de, na po pe, nyau yau, ho lei, no. Te, ha gu ya sa, de, kan zi, tro la, ka ni dao dao, de, da ka, la mu, ina, ha, math reasoning inventory, jau la, shaujua da, na, ge, jau, jau li, no, da ka, de, shai, ri cha. Ye de de mi ya, ka nda, tu, ni, no, lei, ha lei, no, chi tu, de, du si fu, de, jau, kia, de, bi chi, na, ha, lei, ha lei, no, chi tu, eh, ba, no, sa de, fi, no, sa de, cha, ho, chi li, no, ge, ye mu, ta mai, bei, li, ko ba, ha, ta mu, de, ya ta, nde no mu.
We get to do a do slide. So, grade six twelve, so I'll do the assessment portion. As Doctor Ferin mentioned, we're moving to the Fast Track. And so essentially what that's doing is that's combining both the screener and the diagnostic. The goal of all the assessment that we're attempting to do is we're trying to get the best information possible to our teachers in the least amount of time. So, FAST has actually come up with the Fast Track that only has four minutes, so you're not having to significantly reduce any more assessment and creating that too better information for grade six eight. We're also looking at the line of our assessment, so we're looking at changing from the map, map is grade nine. And so we're going to do a FAST AMATH, AMATH grade nine. So, we'll have a key, if you will, K twelve alignment with the FAST. So again, this is just an area with the assessment. And so we think we're again, we're going to be able to better support the data use with the changes in assessments for grade six twelve.
Ka la ba kemi ya, ka na, ho jau, jau, ho, go on. Mu tro tro ne, ha na do la, gu ti, ha hai, gu tro ne, la, ta xin, jau, ho, program, ho, press professional development, ka na na, yau tro, jau, jau, ho ji. Ha Lexia power up, la ke yau, jau, ke, ga, chi, jau, kemi ya ka nda no. Ha la, ho program, reading apprenticeship, ha na, ha, pe yau bi, xiong la, xi xi, ho jau, chi xiong, ha, pe yau bi, de kemi ya ka nda, ho jau, mu tro, ho, go on.
I call it good to pour. They could show the check and down now. They go move and now we consult them to get in and down low library or she time now. Good new life there. The library now more actually can not do to the don't count that to the chemo. Get low library. It didn't hold it a cool idea. They show. He get library month down, down to chat. He get chemo down to. He can down to my library that go go chatly. I he got more to cheer. The baby water to get to the get to the hope pay cheer. La mo pa go to library now. Mo get simple. The get down to. The yeah, the go. That's the baby or you get a pay贴里. And a bow. John, the bar to choo lu, check and to choo lu. Library, I'm gonna down to the don't count. The yeah, they're the one down to the to. The to to. He call you to play to me a gun down here there. La mo. Say point to the. The library that she man, let's say to let to to to. Point down down. In this new more to have a year, the bar to pay. La mo, more to. He bar now, mo she choo. Okay. And the pay them share la mo. What can I mo change? So that now, pay chemo, you know, can down, you know, pay to check down. The pay and now, you call to check down, the water be. You know, she need me to. Lose brain now, pay you more seafood. You know, be check down, hold them, they be make a staff now, hold them check down. They mo call. Hold library. Pay more than down low department. Down to get in and la mo shy, be check and to. We're library she. Pay more to. Point to John, can you bring library? To 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 ya, to ya, I the mo to. Point to go. What did the ta, you be put to point to. You know, go that she man. Let me see she now, get big, you put point to go. Pay you point to now, she man, you point to go, she'll yeah. Pull cheer. Get a mo, get a mo long, pull hu now so. He call get pay she, he call book mobile. Someone now, let's chat. Cheer and then you bow, they get point to. Pay more, you know, look book mobile now. Get more down, I check give me you. La mo to, eh, I the open to the go you down low. Get me a night, can down, John, she go. It to me a gun down, you know, she the to, you point to, to point to down. Down mo to. Can I carry pay bow, I the. Down to, be my get to the me a gun down to. You can down eh. Now, let's add to the, let's in. Year to hold choo. I mean, I can gun down down. Be a second, Jimmy, you know. Can I know, the body going up, be my library, you to the low, they in. And now, you know, the go, go to the to. What's your?
Yeah, it is, thank you.
What's your go? 啊，你快些碰到，还宁咋到依靠 minority student. 我叫 character，我用压力鼓，可能有依靠，我呢，成精
Early stages of learning in kindergarten and elementary schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Soria.
Director Soria，我跟你
Thank you, Madam Chair.
我叫杜曼丽
Can you share a little bit more about the new math pilot?
我哩呢，就靠，new math pilot呢，库鲁特伦呢，压力家
Terrification.
那个姑提里包卡呢，你
And does this have a track record?
我哩呢，有某try record，那到，贝鲁district now 嗯，给可能有依靠，comprehend assessment. 我K E to O，来呀，P to G，Y到那C，K two, three, five. 那姑妈哩撒，多过 哦，海子，海地，我哩呢，叫V vendor，我呸，我哩家，贴了，我哩家 海地，我哩家，可能要靠，我来撒
Appreciate that, and also I understand that there has been a change in the special education department.
嗯，给中国哩靠，special education department
And how do we anticipate this change impacting
我哩好，龙呢，你和有九处里家
Special education services, and what are the challenges that we do foresee in this transition?
And the the results of those screeners relative to the progress that kids kids make. So we know like, you know, where are they walking in? I want to see where kids are walking into our schools. And also, where are kids walking in?
Um, they're top of the list.
Where are they?
Kids are all around the country.
You know, a year later.
It's young.
I'd like to see some of that kind of data disaggregated. I know we've looked at it from time to time.
I think it's important to show us like,
you know, let's look at what we're doing in our school. I know we get kids come and go and it's hard to know sort of the difference sometimes. And we have looked in the past. It's like, let's look at the kids that have never left Minneapolis and see how they're doing sometimes. So I would appreciate that. Um, and then, uh, the other question, I guess, a couple, couple. When is the, um, when is it appropriate to give literacy tests to kids in kindergarten and measure their proficiency? Uh, just anecdotally, I think that, you you know, kids are in a lot of cases in totally different developmental places when they enter kindergarten. Right? So, um, when we say a kid is supposed to be proficient, kindergarten, I mean, I know just from ages, like we have kids that are a year and a half apart in terms of age in kindergarten, right? So we're measuring a kid who's six and a half and next to a kid who's five in terms of proficiency. I mean, I think that's, you know, that that has implications on what we learn and how we teach them. And so I'm wondering, you know, when we say things like, uh, uh, you, you, I don't know, when we look at proficiency for kindergarten kids, right? It's it's hard to really understand the implications of that data. And so I I'm interested in learning more about what is appropriate and where kids should be in kindergarten. And I I know it's kind of controversial for some parents that we do assessments for kids in kindergarten. And, um, uh, I, you know, I would like to learn more about that. Um, and then, uh, um, I don't remember what this question means, so I'm not going to ask it. But maybe I'll remember and I can ask, um, Chief Officer more, um, later. But, uh, again, just thanks a lot for all the work that you're doing and I really appreciate it. And I'm grateful for where we've come in the last five years. Um, uh, I wish we could, like a lot of people, I wish we could just erase the last year and a half and we had a better idea of what kind of progress we've made. But, um, I I like what I'm seeing in terms of the work that we're doing.
If I may respond, Chair Elson. So Dr. Fearing, thank you for your comments. Um, you you touched on a couple of things that we've been talking about. Uh, as a senior officer in team or administration, recognizing accomplishments that you have even through challenges. And I think that's what the pandemic has really forced us to do is to take a look at all the challenges we have and recognizing those accomplishments or those opportunities. And you heard Dr. Fearing, um, speak to a little bit tonight when Director Caprini asked, how do you find the time in these spaces? We're doing things differently, obviously. Um, and it is about having a a growth mindset or problem solving. So again, to to go back to the discussion of how our students are working through math concepts, modeling that for a teacher to review, really trying to create a a growth mindset.
Oh, I did want to answer that.
Um, good satay, they're a new turn the coach.
Three. Eighteen fortyths, I believe, was the answer to your. Three. And you want to know how I did it? I multiplied the denominator by the common denominator and you add those two together.
Good. She know the high, she know the high, sorry.
Three. Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're.
That's it.
Obviously, uh, taking in what you you heard for the math equation. For those of you who missed it, it was one fifth plus one eighth, I think, is what Dr. Fearing mentioned. Um, so again, it it is about, you know, problem solving, growth mindset. You talked about the screener in comparison to outcomes. We'll certainly do that. I think we were looking at this as a baseline establishment. And, uh, future presentations will incorporate, you know, kind of the progress and growth of things. Um, so we'll have that in there. And then the discussion around when is it appropriate to measure proficiency for kids? You're absolutely right. Developmentally, there are, I think, a lot of different opinions about that. In their fortune to have a very strong preschool or, um, you know, early childhood program where we do a goal assessment. And that really does hit more than just the academics. It hits the the social development of the student and to help understand, develop, know where they are. And their ability to to learn things like, um, letter sounds or letter recognition. So when you talk about what assessment we're using, it's it's more about, um, at the early childhood level, um, what's developmentally appropriate for them socially as they come into the context of school. And then once those are solidified or you have opportunity to practice that, you can then start to separate out the the letter recognition, the letter recognition, the number sense accounting. And I would say that those are, again, developmental skills. For some students, um, they're able to grasp them much faster than others. And I think you, having twin boys, know that they're totally different learners, different styles. And, um, just because they have the same chronological age doesn't mean they're going to develop at that level. So it does take a deeper understanding. And I think that also was highlighted with our, um, discussion here tonight about educators really understanding students and spending the time, being able to have the time to sit with the child as they're working through, uh, you know, whether it's just reading out loud or being a math problem. There's so much value in that as opposed to just getting a sheet of paper that says you you have, you know, um, twenty-five of the 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 sounds memorized. So, um, it's certainly one that you'll have differing opinions on. But as an educator myself, um, I'm very much grounded in those those opportunities to to get the developmental needs of the students addressed first.
Thank you, Director Elsman.
Uh, Director Elsman.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of questions here tonight and thank you for the presentation. It was a lot of information to take in, um, prior to the meeting and here tonight. So I guess a couple of questions that I had in regards to the, um, professional development. Wanted to go a little more deeper into that and share with me how or share with us how the professional development that the teachers are receiving. Is it just explained? Is it on a voluntary basis? Is it, um, quieter? And then once it has been done, how are we measuring what actually works? I guess I want to know a little bit more about that. And then even with the letters grant, I mean, how are we piloting that to our curriculum? Will we be using it? Um, those are just a couple of questions that I have. And then also I wanted to just mention, um, the language. When I heard us talking about trying to or looking at the different schools and profiling the schools on what the needs are. Um, profiling is not a good term. I think that should be used with, as we talk about the different schools, just because of the negative, um, tone that comes with it. And language just makes a difference when you're talking to different cultures. So when we say profiling, it's more of an assessment within our school. Because profiling to me says that, okay, we are going to, um, uh, take these location conditions and characterize it as to what they need. But as an African-American mother or parent, our children, we want our children to be challenged. So our circumstances doesn't necessarily, um, dictate what things should be provided at our school. So I hope I'm trying to, um, describe this in the best way that I can. So that just kind of stuck out to me, just the language that we're using when we're talking about our schools. Profiling is is a negative tone when it comes to our African-American community. So if you can just share that, then I'll share my other questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Director Elsman. Um, so going back to the professional development. So in our, uh, school year calendar, uh, our professional development, district of our professional development is, uh, offered now before the school year begins. Today, this week, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, what we know, though, that is when it's job embedded. It's an opportunity here at the forefront of not just education, but also to show it's, um, really we're working to see the multi-impact is in our schools. They have coaches, we have K-two literacy and they're one of our elementary sites. And then we have differentiation specialists in all of our K-eight sites. So for some sites, they have two, um, staff on site. And so we've been really working with those coaches, one on coaching.
Um, they're IP to the level, they're more key to the, you know, they're going to set the rule up here. And they're only, you know, they're going to check the, you know, more than that.
But one possibility would be that a teacher, uh, does the lesson, the coach is in there, um, observes, provides feedback, comes back the next day, observes another part of the lesson.
They do like who, they're like, um, they're, 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 um,
the teacher practicing that the next day. Um, I was at Loring this summer. It was one of our literacy classes.
Um, they're going to, um, they're, um, they're, um, where the teacher had identified one part of the foundations of literacy lessons that she was, um, that they need to, um, the coach said, yeah, did it, the teacher was taking notes.
The the coach would actually step out once in a while and say, did you notice how I did this? Did you notice how the students were responding? Um, and then the next time it would be the teacher's, um, and then provide that feedback. And it's an ongoing cycle. Um, that also then includes working with the group of students to then say, okay, now we've done these different strategies and we've worked one-on-one, however that we can take a team approach with the pattern.
They're going to, um, they're, um,
so only to get so much done in a few days before school year starts. There's a lot of things happening in our building, um, trying to get your classrooms set up. So, you know, we want to present, um, engaging professional development, but also giving information and also starting kind of that that cycle of modeling and having teachers and educators support staff.
They're going to, um, they're, um, they're, um,
part of the PDA that you're going to on is really for our coaches and building administrators and their job embedded. And then with the, um, I do need you to just, um, maybe say a little more, um, your question with the letters.
Well, I mean, I know that was a pilot that was just originally passed. And so I'm wondering how are we going to or will we be using it within our curriculum? As we try to do some of the professional developments and things like that. Will that play a part at all in our professional development within the curriculum or?
So if I, if I may, I think, uh, Director Elsman, you're referencing the the statewide opportunity for letters. It went through the legislature. And, um, I, what I will tell you is that the materials that we currently use, Alexia, is actually, um, the vendor that supports, um, letters. Uh, so we specifically have not accessed anything related to letters at this time. I think what Dr. Fearing has shared was around the structured learning. But more specifically is the explicit instruction that takes place. And, um, what she described this summer taking place over at Loring, I was over there as well and observed the the instruction, um, that was, you know, um, part of our programming. And I don't know if maybe it'd be, you could share a little bit more about that and what that consists of versus, um, again, a program that was state kind of, uh,
They're only, uh, stay up for more.
So our, our work is more focused on the actual instruction. And what that looks like, the explicit instruction as compared to purchasing a product or working with a vendor at the state level.
Yeah, and I would also say, um, there's many different vendors or organizations that provide very similar professional development training. Um, I think letters is solid. Um, I think letters is, um, provides. Um, but we do have through, um, professional development through benchmark. And then, um, I talked about press a little bit through the K-eight. So really, again, that's looking at core, also looking at intervention, tier two, tier three. But then also thinking about extension. So we do have students that are at grade level and above, right? So they need to have the opportunity for extension as well as part of their lesson. Um, I would also say that as we are moving into, um, using the value of having structured literacy, we, uh, really, uh, we're doing in the foundations.